We're going to call to order the Letherton Village Planning Commission meeting for August 20th. Do we all stand for the pleasure of the reasons?
Pleasure of the reasons.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have our roll call, please.
Mr. Hillman? Mr. Scusell?
Present.
Mr. Dizik?
Present.
Mr. Stansbury?
Present.
Mr. Hammond?
Present.
Mr. Tamarrelli?
Present.
We have a quorum. Indeed. Has everyone had an opportunity to receive the agenda? Since I'm still kind of flipping through. Okay, so make sure. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We move the second to approve the agenda for the meeting of August 20th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes from the meeting on April 16th?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those meeting, meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from April 16th, 2024.
I second that.
It's been moved in. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Almost forgot, but I'm sorry. We need a motion to excuse Commissioner Fobbs.
Do we know he's not coming?
Well, he's not on time, so he can't participate. This is my understanding.
I move to allow and acknowledge Will Fobbs' absence and mark it as acceptable.
Second.
We move the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. My fault here. We will open, we will open our meeting up to our public comment. If there's anyone here that has any comments regarding preferably the agenda, but any comment, this is the time.
Anybody online?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
We will close our public comment section, and we will go to old business and table items, which there were none. So now we can move to new business. I guess our first piece of new business, as we have a planning commission goals and discussions. I think we should at least acknowledge that we have a new person. So for all, I'm assuming, which is a bad word, that everyone knows Austin or has met Austin.
I have not. Hi, Austin.
Give Austin a second to at least introduce himself, and then that way everyone can say they do know you.
Hi, my name is Austin Coulson. I joined City Letherton Village in June as the CED and DDA manager. For that, I was the Assistant Community Economic Development and DDA Manager for the city of Hamtramck. And then before that, I worked for Smart Bus for a decade. And I have my bachelor's at Michigan State in urban and regional planning, and then my master's is from Wayne State in public administration. And I look forward to working with all of you and hearing what your goals are for the commission and the city.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
Well, under new business, we're here to discuss. We have not met since April, and one of the things that came up was that we should at least meet to, at least meet, make sure everybody's still around, and we can open the meeting up for us as a commission to discuss our goals, not just for now, but as we go forward. There's no other items as far as from Austin that we really are discussing other than that, unless something has, somebody has something that other items for discussion. So really, this is kind of an open meeting to just discuss going forward some of the things that we see the goals of the planning commission could be, so forth. Jason?
Yes.
Were there any things that have come possibly that could affect the planning commission from council as we look at what our goals could be?
The, the only thing that I could think of is that there, the city did receive petition from residents, signed petitions. There were two of them. One is a charter amendment petition, which would repeal the language in our charter that prohibits cannabis dispensaries. And there was a separate petition to add to our city ordinances, ordinance language for the control and management of cannabis, retail cannabis businesses inside the city. That second petition pretty much mirrors the same language, which was approved by the city, by the planning commission, recommended for approval by the planning commission and approved by the city council over two years ago to control cannabis, retail cannabis businesses in the city, should they have become legalized in the city. So that obviously will update the ordinances, which could have an impact on the planning commission in the form of people are gonna, business owners will probably apply to open cannabis businesses in the city, should those, both of those petitions, both of those proposals be approved by the voters in the November election. It would be both, both proposals, we don't know yet if they're going to be on the ballot or not. They're still going through review by the state of Michigan and the county. But if those, both of those proposals are approved and end up on the ballot and voters approve both of them, then that would obviously impact the planning commission and the form of applicants coming before us for site plan approvals and special use approvals.
Would this be considered deja vu all over?
A little bit. A little bit.
Do you know, Jason, do both have to pass? If one passes and the other doesn't, I mean, is there any sort of?
Yes.
Situation that happens in that those, should that have come to pass?
The hierarchy is the charter comes first. So should the charter amendment proposal get voted down, then the charter would still prohibit cannabis dispensaries in the city. And it wouldn't matter if the other proposal for ordinance is approved or not.
But on the other side, if the charter proposal passes, you got, you'd have to have the ordinance anyway.
Yeah, so that would be interesting. If the charter amendment proposal passes and that language is repealed and the ordinance proposal is not approved, then essentially what we have is a city without any legal restriction.
For cannabis.
Don't we have a group of laws on the books that were basically left in? I mean, I didn't think they were deleted. They were just invalidated by the charter saying there's no cannabis.
That's a good question, something we'd have to ask the city lawyer. I don't know if those ordinance, if those ordinances are still effective or not currently. Obviously, it wouldn't be effective because the charter prohibits currently.
Right, but they were left in the charter or in the?
In the ordinances.
Whatever, the ordinance document, I thought.
Yeah.
I may be wrong.
Yeah.
Did the, when we, when we discussed this in the past and we came up with the ordinances that we recommended to council, did the ordinances, I don't, I'm trying to remember, the ordinances did?
They were passed by the city council.
Okay, so the ordinances are technically there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I.
I was just trying to make sure I remember that, because I remember clearly from the attorney in the past, when he said, if there was no ordinance and the charter amendment passes, it would be a free for all.
Yes.
Because we would have no control over what anyone could be able to do. I remember that vividly.
Yes.
So we were very insistent to make sure we at least had ordinances in place. If it passed, they didn't, and then we had the ordinance. If it didn't pass, we still had the ordinance, but it didn't matter.
Right.
But having it as a vote, if the, to keep the ordinance, that's a whole, that's kind of a loop there. That's a new one.
Yeah, so.
Is there a link to those previous ordinances?
Yeah, you can find it in the zoning ordinances of the city.
I'm sorry, you were about to say?
Yeah, off the top of my head, and I don't know, and I don't want to speak out of turn. Like, it'd be better to get.
Those are just a discussion, open discussion, just trying to make sure.
From, from the city lawyer about the, what actually what happened, given certain circumstances. But I agree with you guys, and my recollection is that we do have ordinances in place. However, the ordinance petition, which is now being considered to be put on the ballot as a proposal, would update that language.
Right, would overlay it, delete whatever. I think I saw there were portions that said, you know, change such and such to such and such.
Yeah, some adjustments to the ordinances that are currently on the books.
Okay.
So, and, but the purposes of that, I'm not exactly sure. I wasn't involved in the group that actually initiated the petitions.
I never, I haven't seen, as a resident, I've seen neither of these petitions, so this is new to me.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, since you asked the question, it's a really important note that we should probably all, once the, well, it's possible to actually look at the city council meeting minutes and the meeting, previous meeting agendas in order to see what was proposed.
Well, I can, yeah, I remember not remember it, but I know where to find what we proposed as an ordinance. And I thought the council had accepted and passed it.
Yes, I'm talking about the new stuff.
But the new stuff, okay.
Yeah, the new, the two new proposals were brought before the city council, and the city council had to approve an action item to forward them to the appropriate election officials to get them on the ballot. So when that action took place, all that language for those two petitions ended up in the city council meeting agenda. So if you want to review like what was actually proposed in the petitions, what people actually signed off, that's the place to go and see it.
They're, they're, they submitted it to the state and county to try to get it on this current November?
Correct. And as of last night, if I remember correctly, the charter amendment petition, I don't know if you remember, but I think the charter amendment petition is still in approval process. The, I think the ordinance petition was already, I think the city administrator already directed the county to add it to our ballot, I think.
Yeah, I can't recall exactly which ones, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Yeah.
But they're both progressing.
Yeah, at this point, at least one of those issues is going to be on the ballot.
Okay.
Probably both of them will be, and it's just a matter of, you know, waiting for the approvals to come through from the state board of elections and the county board of elections. That's it.
One of the things that I think, since we have a new manager, that we should always keep in the forefront is the city's master plan. Every year, we look at the plan with the city engineers, or not engineers, the, the, what, what, let's, yeah, I call it engineer, okay. I'm trying to think of the name of the firm, I'm sorry.
Giffords Webster.
Giffords. And we go through the master plan and we discuss it. But we did have some of a discussion over the past two years. I remember that at some point, we're going to have to really start to look at how we can kind of update the plan. Now, we recognize it's a, it's a obviously huge document, and we're required to have it. It's, the question is, is how can, how can we, as a goal, find a way to break this up into something that's more manageable?
Okay.
We just haven't really discussed it, but I think either we're saying it out loud or we're not saying it out loud, but we know we need to address it. It's just a big document. We're trying to find a way how to address it. So if we were going to discuss some type of goal for the commission, it would be, you know, we look at this document every year. Is there a way to break it into smaller bite-sized pieces that we can at least start to make it a little more current? Understanding the current economic environment we're in, the current development environment we're in, some of the things that have already taken place in the city center and on Southwood Road, and how they now tie into this document that was put together a number of years back.
It is, it is customary five years to update a city's master comprehensive plan, but it is possible to break it up into sections, and you could do a village center update. It would just be for the village center. You could do it just for the neighborhoods. So it is possible to do it where you wouldn't do the entire document at one time, but break it up into two, three sections and have it done more recently, because right now it was done 2021. So we're a couple of years out, but it, like you said, things have changed. It was done during COVID, during COVID-19 lockdown, and things have changed. The people's shopping habits have changed. People, what people are looking for in their downtown has changed. So it would be possible to look at it in bit, bite-sized pieces and go at it where you would have, you know, neighborhoods. You know, is there a neighbor, you know, part of the city, if you look at the quadrants, where it needs more attention? You could have a subsection just for that part of the plan, or you could have here in the village center, a section updated, or just the downtown DDA district.
So I think as we talk about goals, that I think if there's a way to try to include that on this growing list of things, or I should say continual list of things we would discuss, I think that would be a good goal to start trying to break up the master plan in some bite size. So that when the next, well, 26 rolls around, it's not like you started from scratch. You would have had some time to really discuss it.
To that point, I think it's important that we figure out effective ways to get resident and business owner input into that process. Historically, we have periodically done like town hall meetings in the community room and invited the community to come and voice their, their opinions and kind of add to the discussion. The, I don't know what the timing for that would look like in the context of the next time that we actually have to update the master plan in two years, but it would be something worth considering.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe sometime in 2025?
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the most difficult aspects of doing a master plan update is getting the public involved, getting their input, and having town halls, having surveys, connecting with people through other mediums is definitely something to look at now, while we have enough time to look out forward, and also work with our planning consultant to see what is the best practices other communities are using, not just here in metro Detroit, but across the state and across the country, that we could use here to help gain better insight into what our residents are looking for.
And, and business owners.
And business owners, absolutely, yes.
It's important that we include them as well. Historically, we also had, at least at one time that I'm aware of, when I was on the planning commission, we had a combined meeting of the city council, the DDA board, and the planning commission. And we worked with Giffords Webster in kind of a couple of hour workshop to try and organize priorities and ideas and things like that. Obviously, it's an open meeting, so residents are there and could be participating in that as well. It's been a long time since we've done a joint meeting like that.
That would be something that would be, we could definitely put together. I just recently met with Gifford Webster about training for the DDA. There's opportunities to have training here, but not just training, but also planning workshops about what you're looking to achieve over time. So what are we looking to achieve over the next 12 months, which might be these ideas of what aspects of the master plan should we be looking at to update more sooner rather than later? And also look at ways we can connect with the business community and with residents so that when the time comes, we can kind of go the first 12 months, go 18 months out, and kind of take it in steps, and incrementally update the entire master plan, but do it in a manner where we're taking little bite pieces off. And Gifford Webster can also come and either do a joint meeting or just here with the planning commission, do that work, work planning sessions.
Sounds good.
I have a couple more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The city previously was certified by, I think it was by the county as a redevelopment-ready community. That certification has elapsed. I think if I recall correctly, part of developing a master plan in the first place was a required step to be certified as a redevelopment-ready community by the county. So I would like to see the city reengage in the recertification process and get that back in, in, under our, get that certification back.
I completely agree. That is something, in my previous job, we were in the process of becoming RRC certified, and it is something that I have taken a look at and began a conversation with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation about what is it that we are not doing that resulted in the certification to lapse? And also with the position that's in community economic development department, where there's a program manager, assistant DDA manager, that position, we're going, we're trying to look at it in a different way. And we actually just yesterday submitted to the Community Economic Development Association, where it's, they have 10 fellows put into different communities across the state, and we submitted an application to get, want, to have one of those fellows come here to Letherton Village, where it's somebody who's just out of graduate school, someone who's eager to work in local government, and also we would have them for 15 months. And that is one of the top priorities in our application was to get RRC certified.
Great.
Good.
That's good.
Good. The last thing I had was the school, right? So we, you know, the Cernow Company came before us not too long ago.
Yes, yes.
With a proposal for conceptual diagram of a redevelopment of the school as a residential multi-unit residential property. So I wonder if the planning commission should think about, not just specifically to that, but I think it's kind of triggered by that, the proposal. Should we look once again at building material, ordinances, any, you know, look and feel of structures in the Village Center District? Anything like that, that we think might be beneficial in encouraging Cernow Company to undertake a project that matches more with what residents and business owners in the city and the city's city council and the city government would consider to be appropriate for our vision for what the Village Center District look and feel should be. So not to say that what was proposed is way off the mark, but it's just an opportunity to consider. Should there, is, are there any changes that would, the planning commission think would be appropriate to encourage that development to be more in line with our vision and our strategy for this part of the city?
I remember when they came in April, they were very clear to keep saying, this is just conceptual. But one of the biggest issues, and I, we don't know if they've addressed it, because I'm not a part of that group, is they needed to meet with the historical commission, because a lot of what they want to do is going to have to go through that anyway. But I knew they were going to come back. They were taking all these ideas that we had talked about, building material, how it looked, and then they were going to come back. So I guess, you know, in some conversation before Cernow comes back with the second conceptual look at what the, they would like to see develop next door, it would be interesting to know if they've had some conversation with the historical commission, because they're an integral part of that redevelopment. And we were trying, we were trying our best to get them to realize, you can keep coming here and showing us stuff, but at some point, you're still going to have to talk to them. So hopefully, not knowing, you know, in the past months, if there's been some other conversation, but I'm fairly confident they're going to come back with something else. It's just a matter of, is, have all the parties been kind of communicated to? And like you said, I think at the last meeting in April, it would be very helpful if there was a way to have a joint meeting so that you're not telling everybody separately, you know, we're all there together. I mean, I know it's hard to get people together. I realize that. But it's, it's, it would be beneficial if there was a way to have one meeting, even if it's still conceptual, where everyone can still have that same discussion openly.
So you, sorry.
No, I know, I mean, I know you're, you're just learning the ropes, and I have no idea what the answer is. But if somebody contacted you, if they contacted you, what would you tell them that they needed to bring forward to this group? To me, it's something like that would be included in that. We would, we expect you to review our building materials process, and you need to address that and be ready to talk about it. Because it seems like the, I've only been to a few meetings, but we spend an inordinate amount of time, to me, problem solving for them, looking at them and saying, well, you might want to consider this for your, your parking. Why don't you, you know, do such and such and do such and such? And I don't necess, you know, you want to be user friendly, but you don't want to do their work. I mean, so to me, it would have been, you need to find a way to increase your parking spots. You know, if you'd like to talk off, you know, out of the meeting, be more than willing to give you some. But is there some form, some process that says this needs to be included in anything that you bring forward to this group?
Yes, there, in the city's zoning ordinance, and then also in our development guide that we publish online, it does state what elements need to be included in a complete site plan to be brought to the planning commission for review. So, yeah, it would need to be a complete.
It, it just seems like if there was a summary, it always seems like the, I mean, again, it's only been a few meetings, but they always seem to be surprised, you know, you know, did you think about that fence between the alley and that, that person's personal, you know, property? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it just seems like we could give them a bullet point thing, saying you're going to get more detail when you read the, the papers, but here's things that you need to be looking for in there. I mean.
Well, I mean, every time we get a site plan to review, the agenda packet includes a memo from the city engineer, which is Giffords Webster. That memo is already, the engineering firm's reviewed the site plan, identified the potential deficiencies, identified the things that match up with the ordinance that aren't deficient. Then they send that to the applicant, and then it's on the applicant to try to decide how they're going to respond to it. And all that process happens before it gets to us at all.
And, and I can see where that would be, but if I were the person applying and I sent it in, and then I got back this multi-page thing saying, here's what you didn't do, I would have said, I wish you would have told me that in the beginning.
Sometimes, I know for a fact, the applicants will receive these memos and kind of hope that maybe the planning commission will feel differently than the city engineer will and approve something, or suggest an idea that maybe hadn't been thought of by either the applicant or the engineering firm. And that has happened before, right, a couple times, so.
I'm not being, I'm, I'm trying to be user friendly with them. I'm trying to say, if you give me something and say, here's 20 pages of zoning ordinances that you need to review, you know. I think we're saying we do that. We have a packet that identifies.
And the engineering firm's already gone through that and actually provided that summary.
And, okay, I, I mean, I give, I'm just trying to, it just seems like we spend time at the, the few meetings I've been to, problem solving for them, and I ask myself, is that? Absolutely, you're not wrong. Is that what we're supposed to be?
We do. I think part of the concern is what Jason said. As a business owner, I've seen it. I've read it. I had my architect look at it, and I, we all know that. But I still believe there's a possibility I can, I can convince these people that I don't have to put the fence up.
Right, and, and that's, that's human nature, and.
So it's not that they haven't seen it, it's that sometimes I think they just selectively don't want to acknowledge it.
I guess my old, my, I guess my real point was the fact that we spend time problem solving for them as opposed to saying, you need to address the parking, and you need to figure out how you're going to get these parking spaces, and not spend our time here going, you know, if we reverse the alleyway into a one-way, and then we did, and if we took that tree out, you know, I mean, to me, we're supposed to be reacting to something, not doing it.
It's a good point, but I also feel like applicants want to have expediency, and if we just say, okay, here are the problems with your site plan. And if we just say, okay, here are the problems with your site plan, please address them. They gotta wait at least a month to bring that site plan back up for review by us. And if we don't provide them with some kind of directional guidance, not necessarily a solution. Then they're not going to be able to come back with something that could be potentially approved.
I, I don't want, I, I don't want to be, be pedantic. But it, it just seems like we, we, and I'll go to that parking thing. We spent most of the meeting discussing parking for them. And coming up with all of these, you know, ideas for them. And, and I, I personally was like, I don't know why we're, we're, we're doing this. They could have met with somebody off, outside of the meeting and done some brainstorming. But we spent this meeting brainstorming for them.
Before, Tim, just before, on our list. We have acknowledged as a commission and hopefully as a city, that we have a parking problem. Okay, that I've been on this commission for a while, we have failed to address. Okay, so that fact that he brought up parking reminded me of that. If we're going to have a goal, we need to have some serious conversation. Accepting the fact that our own codes and zoning ordinances don't allow for any development. Because none of the businesses have enough parking. So we need to put that on the list to discuss. And that's probably how we end up.
And it may, it might be, like I said, I, I've only experienced a couple of meetings. So I, I don't have a long-term knowledge of where we've been and where, you know, where we're going. And that we may be five million steps ahead of where we were two years ago. I wouldn't know that. I just know that in the short period of time, I've been like, this seems to just be, you know, we're, we're going around in a circle with this. And, you know.
And you're right.
I have even less experience on this. But in reviewing the, in reviewing the minutes from April, what stood out to me as a fresh set of eyes was a discussion that I wasn't part of, nor did I hear or watch. That had a lot to do with building materials and parking. I'll focus on the parking as well. So I share the same, I think, correct me if I'm misrepresenting your thoughts and your words. I'm also confused why the developer would come with something that had worked its way through a few filters already. That doesn't satisfy a very black and white definition of how parking ought to be. So I think I'm reading between a few lines. And the developer's not here to answer for themselves, so who knows? But did they simply miss those, miss the instructions for that? Or did they willfully miss them in hoping that it would slide through without detection? Or were they confused by them or whatever? But I, I too was confused by how the developer could show up with a, with a schema that doesn't properly accommodate parking. And I'll be curious to know how we proceed in the resolution of that. And to what degree that should be our responsibility versus theirs to take the lead on.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say that I think, sometimes it isn't exactly what you said, it's willful. Sometimes there can be requests for variances, right? Which are by definition, not in alignment with the ordinances. But potentially could be beneficial to both the property owner and the city for a variety of different reasons. But that would still need to go through a process of, let's think about this from every angle. Let's ask these questions, let's throw this spaghetti against the wall and see if it sticks, right? And sometimes that's, it looks like problem solving, because that's exactly what it is. And if we get to a point where the planning commission and the property owner are in alignment about something like that. Well, then it still has to go to the city council for approval, right?
But it seems to me like something like that was, should have been caught during the initial review before it even came to us.
I think it is, and it's highlighted in the summary memo.
I think that's most of what we discussed, with, at least with regards to the laundromat, was a request for a variance. And because I think that the apartment complex was brought to us for just initial review. We expressed some concerns based on what they proposed that, we're not final. This were not, this wasn't even proposed, it was not final, so we, it was a workshop. But I, you know, I hear what you're saying.
I just think it's a slippery slope.
So it sounds like, I mean, the, the question is, is it this planning commission's role to do that type of troubleshooting and problem solving or not? And so I think that collectively, the commissioners have to decide if we think that that's our role or not. Like, we have a little bit of sway over this. We can, we can just choose that we're not going to do that kind of stuff. And then if we get a site plan that, you know, has problem solving aspect to it, we just choose not to do it.
I mean, it would seem to me, we fall back on the master plan. And if the master plan, we feel, isn't where the community is now in the parking world. We need to address that in the master plan. And then once the master plan has been identified, and then the subsequent zoning ordinances addressed. Changed or not changed, based on input from the community and all those interested parties. You turn to vendors and developers that come in and say, you know, here's what we do. And unless they come to you with some sort of PUD that has some other things. And part of it is, we're going to sway on the parking. You know, we've looked at it, we've identified it, we've reissued the statement, here's our parking. You're smart people, talk to your engineers, talk to your architects, we'll see you in a month, two months, three months, whatever.
Right. And that is part of the site plan review process on, on my end, is that back and forth. And working with our, our planning consultant. And it comes down to the master plan. It goes to the Village Center design standards and also the zoning ordinance to enforce those. And then when the site plan has gotten to a point where it can be presented here at the planning commission. It is up to you all to decide, you know, does it meet the standards that we have set? And the reason standards are put in place is so that when it does come time to actually make a decision, you do it consistently.
Yeah, easy, simple, repeatable.
User friendly, as Jim said.
Yep.
Right.
I have, my concern with that is, it's only user friendly for us. Until you have sat on that chair, it's not user friendly. Our plan doesn't, our city master plan for the city center hasn't been updated since the time I've been here. And it hadn't been updated before I got here. So it doesn't fit. So if I'm a developer who just spent a million dollars to buy that building today. I don't want to wait five years for you to update your master plan. I'm going to bring you a plan that I think is beneficial to the city and to the developer. When I got on the commission, I asked, how does the planning commission believe that we're going to put together a plan, make it gospel, and expect someone to come spend their money to make it work? You want me as a developer to build your plan? That's not why I'm in business. So what we're discussing is how to truly make it user friendly. Not one-sided user friendly. Because we can do exactly what we just said. Put it in the plan, stick to the master plan, and then if it doesn't fit the plan, keep coming back. Now, as a developer, my response to that is, I tried to build, modify a building. I'm built to put two and a half million dollars into it. You guys don't want to work with me, I'll take my two and a half million dollars down the street. But the problem with that as a resident is, I still have to look at this building that I've seen for thirty years. It looks like crap. Because we, as a community, aren't willing to work with somebody who wants to redevelop it. And I have to realize, am I a planning commission person or am I a resident? As a resident, I would be mad at everybody sitting here. But as a planning commission, I get to tell to my neighbors, say, well, we just stuck to the black and white. So keep looking at the building fall apart. That's where I think we have to find the balance.
Well, and that's input from, you know, in redeveloping the master plan is to see.
Exactly.
Seek input from the interested parties, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, my experience in, in management is that it says it has to be updated every five years. That's the outside number. There's no reason why we can't update it every year. There's, there's nothing that says we can't do that.
Absolutely.
And that to me, what you're talking about is, well, then let's focus to make sure we're consistent, up to date. And you, people look at that and you go, this was updated six months ago, it's fresh.
It's fresh.
As opposed to, it was updated in two thousand and two. It might be a little out of date, but.
Well, to that point, you don't have to update everything. We're going to take a chunk now, next year, two years from now, another chunk.
And I, I think that's, and I think that's really a good way. Because you're still up, it'll still show as updated. It may only have been a section of it, but, yeah.
And that might be, sorry, just, that might be the Village Center design standards. That might be the first chunk we want to take a look at.
Yeah, that might be.
And one of the things that causes communities to not update their master plan or design standards on a regular basis is the cost. That is something, there's a significant cost into doing an update of a master plan. But that also is the entire plan. So if you do break it up into smaller pieces, you know, and there's opportunities for grants to cover those costs as well. And luckily, we do have two principal planners assigned to us from Gifford Webster who know our community very well. They have been part, working here for decades between them now. So that is something that we can use as, as a positive when it comes to redeveloping and redesigning these standards to what, what, not just our standards want to be. But also what the market is asking for. I mean, sometimes it's down to building material. It's like, well, there's some new building materials that are now, you know, in vogue. That people are using in other parts of the country or other parts of the state that, you know, there's no reason you shouldn't be able to use those here.
I think it's important that we do get resident and business owner input as well. But to your point, residents and business owners are not civil engineers. They don't understand the broader market. They may not, maybe they do, but more than likely, they don't understand the broader market. They don't understand what the market is demanding of communities like ours that a business owner might want to open a business in. So it's got to be a balance. So, and we can't be inefficient because we're trying to figure out creative ways to get resident input, right? We need to be efficient, both in, and expedient in how we get that information, how we process it. And then how do we synchronize it in, in, in the context of information that we're getting from, you know, more professional minds that do this day in and day out. But we can't just disregard, you know, resident and business owner input. That's got to be, we got to figure out some way to do both of those things efficiently.
Well, and I think what you spoke to earlier is, is putting out a thing to other communities. We're not the only ones that have a parking problem. How did they resolve it? Or have they not resolved it? And have tried these things that we know, okay, we don't need to try those, because they're not going to work.
And this is a unique case where it's in our Village Center, it's in our DDA, and it's residential base. Compared to businesses where the parking requirements might be a little different. Depending on who they're tailored for. And also who the developer is tailoring the residential units for. Are they going for married couples? Are they going for college students who may take public transit and bike? So it's kind of a give and take and also finding that balance.
Can't think of any other goals.
It's, it's an admirable goal, we should definitely pursue it. Thanks for bringing that up, Jim. No, seriously, it needs to be, it needs to be done.
I think there are a few, I don't think there's a single structure within the city limits of Laker Village. The community has stronger feelings about than that.
The school.
So it's a point of stress, but also probably a point of opportunity to make sure that all of our businesses in order to get that one right. Because I think the stakes are higher for it than they are for potentially anything else. Except maybe potential cannabis businesses, which I think also conjure a lot of strong emotion among the community members. So I think it's only natural that when the stakes are high, that we start housekeeping a bit to make sure it's in order before we make the calls.
Did you have any goals?
My goals? No, I think having, being business friendly and, and, and trying to fuel economic development in the city is our goal. But using that phrase, user friendly, where you understand exactly what needs to be done for a site plan to be brought to the planning commission. But also, understanding what the local markets are looking for and what people are desiring. And I think having that balance and constantly looking back at what has been done. What was done right, what was not done right, and trying to correct those is, is something that I really would like to continue going for as we, community here has been done well in the past with the community development standards. But it's something that is always going to be changing. And especially since COVID, it seems like things change faster. And some of our planning documents are older, like the Village Center is that.
They're dated.
They're dated, that's a good word, dated. And it's time to energize them and, and bring some new energy to them. But getting that, my goal is to have a strong relationship with the businesses in the DDA. But then also balance what residents are looking for. That is what I'm looking to achieve and having an open conversation. Because as Tim said, this building right next to us is one of the centerpieces of our city. So it's something we can do and get right. And it could energize the, the Southfield Road in our DDA. Or it's something we could get wrong. And it just doesn't become an eyesore, it becomes something that was a missed opportunity.
Or an inhibitor.
Or an inhibitor too, yes.
Worse, right?
But sometimes to, to achieve those great things, it does take time. So come, them coming here, presenting what they have in mind, where their goals are, where they're going. And getting that feedback is, is so valuable for them. And I think they are really trying to take it serious. This is something they wanted, this is a project that is something they're looking to fuel forward. And I don't know, I've met with them once to hear what their, their ideas were. What the conceptual plans may be. And I know they're just taking it one step at a time. When it comes to planning, it's all about incrementalism, and they're incrementally moving along. And I know they're trying to get, the building next to us is quite old. And it has issues with not having a fire suppression system, having asbestos. And also being built for a purpose that is not residential. So they're trying to look at how to overcome those. And one of the biggest cost inhibitors to any development is remediation of the building. And I think that is something where they're trying to focus right now. Is to get the funding, to get the building where it is safe for people to work in. And also getting the asbestos that's in there out, so that they can begin the process. But, yeah, it takes due diligence to get it right.
Sounds like a point. I think it's important, and hopefully it came out, but maybe it needs to be stated more clearly that the Cernow Company has been speaking with the city and the city, the Giffords Webster, since they came before us. I just want to make sure that everybody, even people watching this video after the thing, or anything like that. It's not like the thing has been stagnant since April, like, work has been going on.
They were pretty clear when they came in April, that they were seriously wanting to get something done. Even when the question was, when would you really like to get this process a shovel and the dirt? And they were saying in, at, at twenty-five, hopefully.
Okay.
So obviously, they're going to try to get as much done as possible so that we can get through this entire process. So that if they really want to hit that goal, sometimes within the next eighteen months. Or not eighteen months now, but. Sometimes to not end of next year, there's a, they, they can have their little rhythm cutting shovel thing. But then that way, at least it shows that they are trying to do something that we all know needs to be done.
And I think they also understand that this is a, a project that the community is watching. And that also puts a little extra pressure to get it right. And to do that balance we keep talking about between, you know, what the market wants and also what's economically viable for them. So they're trying to, to do, cross their eyes and dot, cross, dot their i's and cross their t's. their t's. That's why it takes planning, to make sure you get it right.
That's right.
And I'm excited to see this project keep moving forward. This is one of the reasons I came and took this job, is because that is a very interesting project. And it's something that I, you know, any role that I can play, I want to be a part of, and watch it transform into something beautiful for the community.
That's awesome.
As an aside, on the topic, I am a relatively new resident of Lakeview Village. I've lived in the city for about three years now, but prior to this, I lived in Ferndale for over a decade. And I've seen these projects go both ways. I've seen incredible, there's an old school building, I think it was associated with the Catholic church next to it, that is now a senior community, and it looks immaculate. And it's, it's a structure that was not intended for residential purposes upon its construction in 1920, or however old it is. And I've also seen the city of Ferndale slap up the ugliest apartment buildings you've ever seen, and everyone gets mad about it. So we don't have the monumental task of managing 75 of these, so with the one that we've got, we should get out the park.
Great point.
Absolutely, and I'm also a resident of Ferndale, and yeah, they, the developer for that school put time into planning on that project, and it came out really well. And it's serving a new purpose. And that's kind of what buildings are supposed to do, they transform, they change what their intended goal was, they attract different people who were not using it in the manner previously. And it can be exciting to see when a project where you're redeveloping a building does hit the mark. It can be exciting, and it's something the community can be proud of.
Yeah, I agree. I've lived in, I've lived a lot of places, and there's nothing worse than seeing a building that's been completed and has been vacant for four, five, six years, just sitting there. It doesn't look well for the community to have that building there. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a good idea to work with them very closely.
This shifts the subject a little bit, another goal. And this is on my mind, because it was brought up during the city council meeting last night by residents, standing water in the city, and backlogged ditches and culverts, and the like. So it is an issue that seems like more and more residents are being impacted by, especially in their backyards. There's a lot of different reasons, heavy rains that are saturating the ground, preventing additional rain from being able to dissipate into the ground, heaving culverts in driveways, ditches that have been filled in, catch basins that are clogged with debris, like, there's a million different things. So we don't have to solve all those problems ourselves, but I think it would be great if we could figure out as a commission, what kind of decisions or discussions we could have that could have a beneficial impact to trying to move towards some sort of a solution to those problems.
I would agree with that completely. I'm one of the victims of, I mean, we spent $10,000 per house to have the road redone and new, the ditches eliminated and all of these drains split in. And there, there was water three-fourths of the way up my driveway, our neighbor's basement went, people across the street, and this was with a, this is only about a year old, and it's still not working right.
And that's something even major cities like New York and Philadelphia, they've started looking more into natural ways of, of slowing water down from getting to the drains, but also figuring out ways for the ground to satur, to absorb more water, when it comes to bioswells and other natural methods that can be done. That's something that they have departments on now, because certain parts of cities have it worse than others. And so when there's these major storm events, where is the water going to go? It's got to go somewhere. And slowing it down before it gets to drains where, in the city, there are drains, but then also where there are no current stormwater drains in the city, I think looking at bioswells and looking at other ways to capture the water and help it saturate and filter down into the ground faster and easier, and also create natural areas where there's both plants that absorb large amount of water, but also where there's pockets that water can go into and stay off of people's backyards, or where, yesterday, as you're talking, there's people where it's, their backyard is lower than their neighbor's, so everything's going on to their, on to one property. And that's where French drains come in, could help. So there are other ways besides putting in large sewer drains to help manage the water. But it has been, especially this summer, been a unique rainfall. We've had a significant amount of rain this, this summer.
We're not the only ones suffering.
No.
A lot of communities in this area have that challenge. We, as a planning commissioners, we had had in the past discussions about permeable, non-permeable surfaces, and talked about potential adjustments to ordinances to kind of restrict non-permeable surfaces, like, you know, driveway pads, and, you know, restricting the length of driveways and things like that. But I think there's more that we can do. I don't know exactly what it is, but I'd like for us to have as a goal that we look at that issue.
And there are communities that do set standards, where it's X amount, percentage of the lot can be covered by the home and the garage, and then after that amount of the lot is taken up, only this percentage remaining can be non-permeable. And communities have gone beyond where they'll go, okay, you can build more, you know, coverage on to a lot, but it's got to be a permeable surface. It's got to be a surface that allows more filtration. And especially our soil here in southeast Michigan, it's not very permeable. It's, it does not allow for water to saturate down or retain.
Yeah, so if you could replace that with like, layers of permeable surfaces that all bleed, work together in order to dissipate.
With an engineered surface that where it can allow it to drain down and be captured, rather than remaining on top, waiting for that permeability to open up. Help, engineer it in a way to help it, the water flow where we want it to go, and retain it so it's not on the surface.
But by and large, we're not a concrete community, right?
No.
I mean, we've got loads and loads of green space. And I don't think the issue is that we've got somebody that's adding a parking pad.
No.
I think it goes beyond that. And the appetite of the council to take on a, some sort of measure, I mean, we were rebuffed with our proposal, as I recall. So I mean, maybe this is part of the planning meeting with the council, clearly to talk about, you know, what direction to take. But I don't believe that the issue is with the citizens and their concreting their property and building auxiliary buildings and, you know, there's the odd person here or there that's blocked a few things, but I think we have to be real, there's a bigger problem.
And also, we have a more rural system with the culverts and ditches, where we are, we're not a very dense community compared to the cities surrounding us, but we still are a urban suburban community with a rural stormwater management system.
And an aging sewer infrastructure.
Yeah, and that as well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Definitely. Well, and drain system is not just the sewers. In fact, hopefully the stormwater isn't going in the sewers.
Right.
Any other comments regarding possible goals? We can continue to bring this up at every meeting, but I mean, just for this evening, if there's nothing else, keep moving.
I think the parking and the water management, that's, you know, something that we need to put on the radar in the central business district. You know, reviewing that with, with idea being the school's redevelopment makes a lot of sense, those three things.
And starting here in the village center is a good place to begin.
Village center, thank you, yeah.
All right. All right. We will move on to other matters for discussion, which I think we discussed all other matters.
And this is something, if, this is, you prefer to have these open discussion periods, I can have, you know, I didn't put it on the agenda, it's just...
Well, that's fine. One thing that we used to, that we're probably accustomed to is, we had a report that showed the developments that were taking place and where things were in the process.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, are there any things that are on, since you've seen it, on that list that are still in process, or people still waiting for permits, or waiting for such and such, not since we didn't have one this evening? We can continue to keep updating that, so we'll...
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, one of the questions I realized, at least in my own, was, when you sit on the commission, you go through all these projects, and once we approve the site plan, we're pretty much done with, with our part of it. So we don't really know what happens next, unless you're driving down the street and go, oh, they finally did, X, Y, and Z. But that report gives us the ability to see where some of the projects that we have seen, where they are along the way, how they're, how they're coming along, if there's been a delay. And it's probably more just informative to us, as opposed to something to discuss. It's only because we've seen it, we approved the site plan, so you don't want to say, oh, yeah, we approved this, so when's it happening?
Yeah.
Then you find out, oh, the developer's waiting on this, or they're waiting for this, and at least we'll, we can have...
I think that's a great idea, because it allows you to see the entire picture of what's going on, and where there might be hiccups in the development process that the commission can look into and find out ways to remediate those issues.
As they come up again.
Exactly.
It's also, it's even beneficial for projects that are going smoothly and don't need additional action, in the context of, like, just you working on that report means you have to kind of put your thoughts together about what it is, and then you have to present it to us, which is a public forum, right? And it ends up being in a YouTube video that gets published, and so then it's more transparent to the people in the community about what the status these projects are. Because people are always asking, especially if there's something happening in the neighborhood they live in, what the heck is going on with this project? And if there's a report that you can point them to, or that they can go and look at themselves, then at least they have more information than they would have without the report.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's very true. If I get asked by one more person, when the laundromat's going in? Because that sign has been there forever.
When is it going in?
I don't, I, they haven't touched that building. I mean, at least on the outside.
They had some activity a couple of months ago, but there hasn't been much.
I mean, because it's at the end of my street, so I see it all the time. People go, you know, I could use a laundry, and I'm like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a report that's most beneficial for myself, to see where things are progressing right and wrong, for you all to see, all right, you saw the beginning phase of it, how is it progressing down, but then also for residents, as Jason said, let residents know what is going on and also what's coming.
Thank you. Under our, before the adjournment, we have general communication, and I guess one of the things we need to communicate is that this is Bo's last meeting. Bo has elected not to serve beyond the end of his term, which ends at the end of August, right? I think that's how that works.
Yes, as far as I know.
Sure. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, and you guys are doing a good job, and I know you will continue to.
Thanks for being part of the group.
Yeah, no, no.
As you were.
My pleasure.
It's been my pleasure.
Enjoyed it.
Don't be a stranger.
Oh, I'll be around.
We do have public meetings.
Yep. Yep. Keep an eye on you guys.
And Bo did let Mike and I know, and so we have posted that we are opening, we're open to applications for the planning commission, and we're accepting them. A couple have been received, and they've been passed along to the mayor. So the post is still up, so if anybody interested, is interested, or you know anybody who might be a good fit, we're still accepting applications, so.
Once again, thank you for your service.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
See, we could have got you some of your favorite chicken.
Maybe I'll head down there after the meeting.
If there isn't no other general communication, we will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yay. I'll second.
So moved, meeting is adjourned.